Okay, please go to your seats, councilors. Forty-first regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation by Honorable Counselor I'm Rose Moreno, followed by the singing of the Lupang Hinirang and the Kagayan di Oro March. Please rise.
Let us all remember that we are in the Holy Presence of God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Our Heavenly Father, as we enter this workplace, we bring your presence with us. We speak your peace, your grace, your mercy, and your perfect order in this office. We acknowledge your power over all that will be spoken, thought, decided, and done with these walls. Lord, we thank you for the gifts you have blessed us with. We commit to using them responsibly in your honor. Give us a fresh supply of strength to do our jobs, anoint our projects, ideas, and energy so that even our smallest accomplishment may bring you glory. Lord, when we are confused, guide us. When we are burned out, infuse us with the light of the Holy Spirit. May the work that we do and the way we do it bring faith, joy, and a smile to all that we come in contact with today. In Jesus' name, may our work and the work that we do be fruitful. Amen.
... ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary Candy, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger J. Abadai, Honorable JR Pasqual, Honorable Amy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go King, Honorable Jose P. S. Abbott Jr., Honorable Malvern I. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yasinie B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lourdes Isdañi, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Belaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ayamak Kinakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-Official Members: Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligenangga Barangga President, and Honorable John Michael Elsano, City Escape Federation President. There is corom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Corom is hereby certified. Good afternoon, councilors, our friends from media. Our visitors who are here today, good afternoon. And of course, our viewers are watching this afternoon. Good afternoon. I would like to call Majority Floor Leader Edgar Cabanlas.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor, B. Rodriguez, and Presiding Officer. Good afternoon. Good afternoon to the members of the City Council, to the members of the media. We have guests here, Madam Chair, who will be properly introduced at the proper time. People who are watching us in their different social media outlets or platforms, people of Genduro, good afternoon. May respectfully move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session of this council on May 29, 2023, and to consider the furnishing capish thereof as reading itself.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
May respectfully move for the approval of the minutes, Madam Chair.
Any second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
On appearance, before we go to appearance, we would like to recognize, Madam Chair. We have a delegation of the members of the youth from Lando del Sur. Some are government officials, and they are here to benchmark on our best practices. They are here to observe how we, members of City Council, conduct ourselves during session and the matters that we are taking up. They are also here, I think, to go around the city and see the beauty of our city, the friendship that they are expecting from us, knowing that we are a city of golden friendship. So, may I request, Madam Chair, that the members of the youth of Lando del Sur be recognized and headed by... Board Member: Jamil Faisal Zaru Ajung, President ISKI Panalawigan Federation Ex-Official Member, Sangguniang Panalawigan, Provincial Government of Lando del Sur. May I request to stand up to be recognized, antanan, pidi matindong? Yeah, Board Member Ajung. Okay, so welcome to the city of golden friendship. Welcome to the City Council.
Majority Floor Leader, can we do a recess first, then you can have them join us in the picture-taking?
Okay, so move for a recess, Madam Chair.
Any second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
So, picture-taking?
Yes, welcome to Kagayan di Oro City, the city of golden friendship. Yes, please come forward and join the councilors in our picture-taking.
Wala may snacks karunak, eh? Latan na to dore. Okay, okay.
Rise, thank you very much. Yan.
Pedi man po, uh, Counselor Edgar. So, this room's an... Dede na? Aula pa siya? Ah, sige, sige.
Okay, Majority Floor Leader, you have the floor.
May I request, Madam Chair, that you declare...
Uh, session resume.
So, we... So, thank you very much to our guests. So, we proceed to the agenda proper, Madam Chair.
Majority Floor Leader, I would like to... We would like to have to sing a birthday song to Counselor EB Imano to be led by Counselor Aga Suwan. Oh, delete, delete. Delete ko, request, Atchas, Counselor. Sorry, sorry. Counselor Ayam Atchas, please, you're recognized. Make your voice louder. Please rise. So, happy birthday, Consuela EB. Silin na siguro. Magkanta lanta, Madam Chair.
Depagong one message.
Say, "Happy Birthday to you." Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday to you. Message.
Wish all the best and good luck and happy birthday.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Counselor, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Happy birthday EB. Ola may prior announcement, birthday birthday.
That was last week.
Last week, ah, 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 okay. So, on appearance, this afternoon, Madam Chair, number one is proposed motion number 2023-7 to hear in aid of legislation, the Regional Director for Northern Mindanao of the National Economic Development Authority, or NEDA, regarding the metropolization of Kagayan di Oro City. Invited is Director Maila Fe Aurora B. Carignio, Season 3, Regional Director, NEDA Region 10. I think this year, so we'd like to request that we suspend the rules to allow non-members of the City Council to speak before the council.
Rule suspended. We'd like to acknowledge also the late Counselor Jay Pasqual and Counselor Suset Daba. I'd like to acknowledge our guest from Nidano, Director Maila Fe Aurora Carignio. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maayong hapon ka na tuntanan. Thank you for inviting us. We received your invitation actually last Friday. I was actually chairing a meeting this afternoon, but I had to leave because I don't want to miss a chance to present before the council our efforts relating to the metropolitanization of Kagayan di Oro.
Thank you.
So, this is actually my second time to speak before the council, Madam Chair, and I'm very happy to be sharing about Metropolitan Kagayan di Oro because one of our staunchest advocates is actually Congressman Rufus Rodriguez of the Second District of Kagayan di Oro.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair knows him very well. Our birthday greetings to Counselor EB, our Counselor from the Second District, and from the Second District, ma'am. Happy birthday. So, I will be presenting to you this afternoon Metropolitan Kagayan di Oro, its directions and perspectives. Next slide, please. I'd like to begin by sharing with you some of our core or key messages, which is actually our way of assuring you that things are moving as far as Metro Kagayan di Oro is concerned. One is that there are concrete steps being made to realize the metropolitanization of Kagayan di Oro and its environs. And I will chronicle later on these concrete steps and share also the ways forward. And some of the ways forward, we actually request support from the City Council of Kagayan di Oro. Second is that metropolitanization is actually both a process and an outturn. As in other metros in the country, we have actually three right now, Metro Manila, Metro Cebu, and Metro Davao, the process takes time. As the scale of metropolitanization gets bigger and interdependencies and interconnectedness become more pronounced, development goals are also shared among our neighbors. The third message is this, that metropolitanization is both a function of the public and private sectors, and in collaboration between and among these players and other stakeholders is crucial in getting the optimum benefits of metropolitanization. Finally, the message is that durable mechanisms are needed to institutionalize Metro CBO. This may be facilitated by the creation of a metro authority that will oversee and manage all metropolitanization efforts without diminishing the authority and function of the individual LGUs that make up Metro CBO. So, next slide. This is the outline of my presentation. Karun palang, Madam Chair, our beloved Vice Mayor, mga ayaw nakuog ka ng dispensa kay medyo taas, panagsarapod baya ko makahistoria before the council, and I would like to take advantage of this opportunity to share straight from the horses' mouth, so to speak, para hindi siya maritis ng hatud-hatud sa historia, gikan gud mismo sa amo. Next slide. So, based on the Philippine Development Plan 2017-2022, which was crafted under the administration of President Rodrigo Rova Duterte, there are three metropolitan centers in the country, which I have already mentioned. These are the economic centers of the country's three main island groups. They have distinct functions in innovation and advanced services, culture and tourism, education and research, transportation and trade, manufacturing, and technology developments. In the same document, they identified that by 2025, Metro CBO will become the fourth metropolitan center. And what is their basis of this pronouncement? It's actually based on the projected population growth and the functional role as a major gateway and transshipment hub in Northern Mindanao, which I will elaborate later on. Next slide. This is very interesting. Metro Manila Development Authority, created in 1975, the MMDA is under the direct supervision of the Office of the President. It performs planning, monitoring, and coordinative functions, and in the process exercises regulatory and supervisory authority over the delivery, let me emphasize, of metrowide services within Metro Manila without, and let me underscore once again, without diminution of the autonomy of the LGUs concerning purely local matters. Now, Metro Cebu is another matter altogether. The Metro Cebu Development and Coordinating Board, or MCDCB, is a coordinating body for metrowide planning and development created on April 1, 2011. And let me emphasize this, through a MOA. MOA only, signed by LGU executives, heads of national government agencies, and leaders of the private civil society sector. Metro Davao is very unique. The Metro Davao Development Authority was created on April 13, 2022, just before the president stepped down by the passage of Republic Act Number 11708. And this is what Congressman Rodriguez is also fighting for, that we can legislate actually the creation of a Metro Kagayan di Oro or Metro Kagayan di Misamis Development Authority. But prior to the enactment of the law, RDC 11 created a Metro Davao Development Coordinating Committee in 2017. Currently, the MDCC serves as the interim body to the MDDA pending the issuance of the IRR. What about Kagayan di Oro City? The Adho Committee for Metro Kagayan di Misamis, this adho committee was created under the RDC through Resolution Number 31 Series of 2021 during the council's meeting on June 24, 2021. And our first chair was the former mayor of Kagayan di Oro City, Mayor Oscar Moreno. Next slide. So, the first, of course, is the oldest metropolis in the country, Metro Manila. It is also officially known as the national capital region. It is composed of 16 highly organized cities and one municipality. In turn, these LGUs form the Metro Manila Council. So, na IMMDA, pero na ako'y Metro Manila Council. Metro Manila is the country's seat of government and center of culture, economy, and education. It also has the Metro Manila Development Authority, which performs planning, monitoring, and coordinative functions. And as I've mentioned earlier, it is under the Office of the President. Next slide. Metropolitan Cebu, which is the main urban center of Province of Cebu, is composed of seven cities and six municipalities. In 2011, the Metro Cebu Development and Coordinating Committee In twenty eleven, the Metro Cebu Development and Coordinating Board was created to formulate development plans for the Metro Cebu area and coordinate their implementation. However, and let me underscore this, it does not have legal and institutional powers as the law to create such board is still pending in Congress. So it has been languishing for the past twelve years. In October twenty twenty-two, the NEDA ten conducted a benchmarking activity on the said board in preparation for RDT twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight and for the eventual activities of the Metro Cagayan di Oro, or as Congressman Rufus would like to call it, Metro Cagayan di Misamis. So let me share some of our learnings about Metropolitan Cebu. The Cebu Governor is the ex-official chair of the board with two co-chairs, one from the private sector and another from the member regional line agencies. The NEDA seven serves as the interim secretariat and let me emphasize interim secretariat because the secretariat services shall be turned over eventually to either a regional line agency or a local government unit. This setup is actually very deliberate to dodge criticisms that the NEDA seven or the RDC seven is only focusing on the Metro Cebu area. The Provincial Development Planning Office of Cebu has been trained on secretariat work in the past but has not assumed secretariat role as the pandemic stalled board meetings and activities. The MCDCB's areas of concern focus on the following: traffic decongestion, waste management and addressing flooding and ensuring, uh, adequate water supply across the metropolitan area. Most of the major projects implemented within Metro Cebu are private sector-led with strong support of concerned LGUs. There are some issues actually hindering the operation of the Metro Cebu Board and this includes the following: weak authority to implement decisions due to voluntary LGU participation and delay in the passage of Sanggunan Resolutions approving the Board's MOA. For further, only five out of the eleven members contributed to funds, contributed funds to support the operationalization of the Board. The, the death of the MCDCB's champion, uh, Mr. Aboytis actually dealt a blow to the Board's operation and its sustainability. The JAICA or the Japan International Cooperation Agency has conducted several studies in the metropolitan area, some of which have been implemented through ODA or the Official Development Assistance, Joint Venture and Public Private Partnership. Now what about Metro Daval? The third metro is Metropolitan Daval, which is the main urban center of Mindanao, according to them, because we also would like to claim that Cagayan di Oro is a major urban center in Mindanao. Don't you agree, Madam Chair? It is comprised of fifteen LGUs with Daval City as a center. On April thirteen, twenty twenty-two, as I have mentioned, President Rodrigo Duterte signed into law Republic Act number one-one-seven-zero-eight, which created the Metropolitan Daval Development Authority. At the moment, there is still no IRR. Thus, the Metro, uh, Metro Daval Development Coordinating Committee is the one acting as a coordinating body for Metro Daval. Next slide, what about Cagayan di Oro? The PDP twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two indeed confirmed and recognized the functional roles of Metro Cagayan di Oro to become the fourth metropolitan center in twenty twenty-five, which is much earlier than the, which is much earlier than the pronouncement that it will become a metro in twenty forty. The NEDA has identified this through various parameters. The NEDA looked at population, economy, size, metropolitan link, metropolitan-like linkages, among others. And the idea of Metropolitan Cagayan di Oro is carried over in the succeeding plan of the, of the RDP twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight. Now, the conceptualization of Metropolitan Cagayan di Oro actually dates back as early as nineteen ninety. So we can see that our leaders in the city actually have foresight because they have seen the metropolitanization of Cagayan di Oro as early as nineteen ninety. Then Metro CBO Special Development Project, or the MCSDP, has been focused on the development of the infrastructure links between Cagayan di Oro City and Iligan City. Why is this significant? It's significant because these two cities are actually highly urbanized cities and therefore independent of the provinces of Misamis Oriental and Lanau del Norte. The Cagayan di Oro Iligan Corridor Master Plan in the late nineties was part of the Metro Cagayan di Oro Special Development Project containing several volumes of studies that included major project proposals such as the Lagindengan Airport and the Mindanao Container Terminal in Vividek Industrial Estate of Misamis Oriental. So truth be told, the establishment or construction of the Lagindengan Airport and the MCT is actually part of our preparation for Metro Cagayan di Oro. In nineteen ninety-six, a comprehensive master planning for the Metro CBO was proposed to further focus on the planning for Cagayan di Oro City and its immediate environs. In two thousand nine, the NEDA Regional Office then prepared the Expanded Cagayan di Oro Iligan Corridor Area Plan and identified Metro CBO as the hub for trading and ser- trading and services. In twenty seventeen, the said metro was recognized to become the fourth metropolitan center in the PDP. In twenty eighteen, the NEDA, still then under Director Leon Dakanay, initiated the conduct of the Metro Cagayan di Oro Master Plan for the Sustainable Urban Infra Development. Let me emphasize, this is not a plan for Metro Cagayan di Oro, but this is a master plan for the urban infrastructure development of an area being not known as the Metro Cagayan di Oro. Next slide. After the SUID MCDO Master Plan and its five pre-feasibility studies were accepted by the NEDA Central Office on March twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, by the way, ako lang klaruhon. The proposal was approved and endorsed in twenty eighteen, but the actual conduct of the master planning was done in twenty twenty until twenty twenty-one. It was only approved in twenty twenty-one. Medyo nas stalled on preparation because we were under the pandemic. Part of the urban, uh, infra master plan is actually the preparation of five pre-FS or pre-feasibility studies. And what are these? Pre-FS? The Metro Cagayan di Oro Railway Project, from Lagindengan to Cagayan di Oro Tagolwan Section of the Mindanao Railway System, the Metro CBO Transit Oriented Development Housing Project, the Metro CBO Waste-to-Energy Project, the Metro CBO Cable Car System with Related Tourism Development Project and Water Supply Improvement Project. In twenty twenty, various webinars were conducted for the thirteen Metro CBO LGUs. Actually, katung thirteen ka Metro CBO LGUs, they were supposed to be brought to Singapore to study, uh, uh, Singapore and how they planned for Singapore. But because of the COVID pandemic, what we had were just webinars, but these were conducted by planning experts from Australia. Next slide. Uh, also, in twenty twenty-one, by the way, can you just go back? This is very important. In twenty twenty-one, Congressman Rufus Rodriguez and NEDA ten agreed to draft an alternate House Bill for the creation of a development authority to harmonize the congressperson's bill and the proposed governance mechanisms as proposed by the Sustainable Urban Infra Development Master Plan of Metro CBO. The RDC ten also initiated the creation of an Adho Committee to act on the governance mechanism of the Metro CBO. Asa namanikaron ang bill ni Congressman Rodriguez. It is now being deliberated on the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization. Okay, next slide. So actually, twenty twenty-one siya na-approved and starting twenty twenty-one, we were actually already proposing, uh, some projects for the Metro CBO area. In fact, for twenty twenty-three, we proposed a total of thirty-one point three billion worth of programs and projects and around ten point six billion were approved, or we have a batting average of thirty-three percent. For twenty twenty-four, we actually proposed a total of sixty-eight point fifty-six billion for, uh, projects around the metropolitan area of Cagayan di Oro, the bulk of which are infra projects of the DPWH ten, but as we know, karun pa mang third quarter ang deliberation in Congress. And we would know, pag moabut na ang National Expenditure Program, how many of those that we have actually proposed, uh, are being considered by this administration? Next slide. So let me zone in, no, on the SUID or the Sustainable Urban Infra Development in Metropolitan Cagayan di Oro or SUID Macdo. So SUID MCDO. So as I've mentioned in twenty eighteen, the NEDA Commission, the formulation of a master plan for the Sustainable Urban Infra Development in Metropolitan Cagayan di Oro City. This costs, uh, the proposed fund is sixty-four million, no? Not eighty-one million. And this was supported by the RDC ten through Resolution Number Thirty-four, supporting the formulation of this master plan. The study was funded under the Project Development and Other Related Studies Funds of the NEDA with CPRM Consultants and Transport and Traffic Planners as consulting firms. The master plan officially commenced in January twenty nineteen and was accepted and approved by the NEDA on March twenty-five, twenty twenty-one. Said master plan is available for downloading by the public in our website. Even as we speak, many of the programs are already being considered. Next, these are the objectives of the study and I would no longer, um, read them one by one. You can, we can actually give you a copy of my presentation. Now let me emphasize, this is not a metro development plan. This one, this, uh, this SUID is meant to support the feasibility studies of infra projects that are needed by Metro CBO to ensure sustainable growth. Let me emphasize sustainable growth. Next. Let me show you the features of the plan. Now this is a Metro CBO vision. Actually, this was crafted through a series of consultative meetings, which include the various mayors under the Metro CBO area. And this is, uh, what has been approved, that the Metro CBO is a premier agri-industrial, trading, service and knowledge-based center of the Philippines with sustainable register of connectivity for safe, secure and livable communities. Next slide. The Metro CBO comprises of two cities, namely Cagayan di Oro and El Salvador, and eleven municipalities. Ten of these municipalities, namely Alubihit, Claveria, Hitagom, Initaw, Asaan, Lagindengan, Libertad, Opol, Tagolwan, Villanueva are located in the province, uh, in the province of Misamis Oriental and one, Manolo Fortiche is in the province of Bukidnon. But in the bill of Congressman Rufus, uh, wala panayagi appeal, no? Ang Hitagom, Initaw and then, uh, ang Manolo Fortiche. So, uh, but based on our proposal, Metro CBO has a total land area of two hundred twenty-seven thousand hectares and has a combined population of one point thirty-two million as of twenty twenty, which is the latest round of, uh, demographic survey. Next slide. The master plan made use of various approaches with long-term or sustainability perspective. This include livable cities, smart cities, global cities, circular economy, room-for-rever approach, transit-oriented development, sustainable mobility, eco-industry, open space framework and aerotropolis. The structure plan of Metro CBO integrates the various elements in one cohesive master plan. I would just share some of the spatial strategies as mentioned in the plan. One is the Polin Nuclear Metropolitan Area, kanang mga lingin-lingin. Poli means many nucleus, no? Um, and they have functional, uh, roles. So the master plan will adopt a decentralized structure through a polinuclear organization of urban centers and these are anchored on the current town centers and Cagayan di Oro Central Business District. This scheme allows the different cities and municipalities of Metro CBO to have a different role in the metropolitan area and prepare and implement their CLUPs to translate that role into a coherent land use strategy at the LGU level. So very important any pursuit sa metropolitanization are these two things. Updated ba ang CLUP sa mga miyembro nga LGU sa Metro CBO? Updated ba ang ilang comprehensive development plan? Ang CLUP ba nila nag-inform sa implementation sa CDP? Those are the questions that we'd like to ask. So let me proceed to the metropolitan strategies. Next slide. We are actually pursuing a cluster strategy through the establishment of economic clusters of LGUs. Because if we form them into clusters, mas mamaximize na'to, no? Ang, uh, mamaximize na'to ang benefits and at the same time, we will have optimal use of the very scarce resources of the various LGUs that make up our Metro Cagayan di Oro. So the four major clusters have been identified, no? Each cluster has its contributing economic role to Metro CBO as and is comprised by complementary LGUs. So what are these four clusters? Let me begin. We have the Aerotropolis Cluster, where the Lagindengan Airport is located. So mayong tag Aerotropolis, it is a metropol- metropolis or a cluster that is anchored on the operation of an airport. Another is the Cagayan di Oro Cluster, where the core city of Cagayan di Oro is located. And this is the education and financial center and this cluster is the gateway to industry, commerce and trade. Then we also have the Heavy Industry Cluster, covering the Vividek Industrial Estate and we have the Agri-Industry Cluster of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon and Claveria in Misamis Oriental. So let me, uh, discuss a little bit about the transport strategy. So we have to widen the modal choices, no, or the modes of, uh, transportation to improve the efficiency of transportation within Metro CBO and considerably improve connectivity with other regions and the global market as well as between Metro CBO and the Mindanao provinces. What are the major programs and projects? Una, the Lagindengan Airport Development Projects. And the Lagindengan Airport Development Project is going to be funded through PPP and we will have the latest update, which will be presented by the DOTR from Manila during the Infra Committee of the RDC on December, on, uh, June thirteen. We also have the expansion of the Mindanao Container Terminal, the Region Ten Priority Infrastructure Project, Rex Trip Six, Villanueva, Cagayan di Oro, Opol Expressway and Rex Trip Seven, which is actually Opol and Na'awan Expressway. And these have already been proposed. Some sections are already funded. Next slide. The Growth Area Strategy of Metro CBO involves the establishment of growth areas, mostly outside of Cagayan di Oro City, because we also want to bring development outside of Cagayan di Oro and we also want to decongest Cagayan di Oro. By doing this, a more even urban development and spread of economic activity will hopefully be achieved. The major growth areas include the following. Let me, ako lang ni siyang i-highlight, no? The continuing development of the three thousand hectare Vividek Industrial Estate in Tagolwan Villanueva, this is actually the largest estate in the country. We also have the five hundred twenty-six hectare Habini Bay Development in Lagindengan, Misamis Oriental. It has its own port along the Iligan-Cagayan di Oro Butuan Highway Industrial Corridor. Habini Bay features a new town with residential products, commercial retail centers and light industry. And Habini Bay, we have been informed by Ayala, will be launched this year, if nothing miscarries. Then we have the proposed two hundred ninety-two hectare University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, USTP Alubihit Esenti Park, a future mixed-use development that will also house the main university campus. Originally, the idea was for the government center to be brought to the USTP. It's two hundred ninety-two, but you know, when the studies, the technical studies were done, we discovered that only fifty hectares of the two hundred ninety-two hectare property can be used for A and B. And ang mahatag nila for government center is only around four hectares. That's why we are looking at, um, the CAAP, the airport area. Ayala donated around nineteen hectare, uh, one hundred hectares to CAAP and we would like to request that around ten percent of that land be donated for the regional government center. Next slide. Then we also have the Transit Oriented Development. TOD develops communities by establishing mixed-use housing that are located about five hundred meters away from train stations or public transport. Muonika nunay ang reklamo sa katawan, nga hunahatay housing project, ang housing projects, layuk kaayus sa kabihasnan, ukiran ang layuk sa kabihasnan, kung na ay transportation. So ang atong, ang atong strategy is really a transit-oriented development. Ngang mga housing, we will be developing compact communities designed within vocal neighborhood concepts. Next slide. As I've mentioned, we already have this pre-FS, the Metro Cagayan di Oro Railway Project, the Lagindengan-Cagayan di Oro Villanueva Section of the Metro Railway System. Pero napukuy idugang, no? Because there have been developments since the approval of this twenty twenty-one plan. And then we also have Metro CBO Transit Oriented Development Housing Project, Waste-to-Energy Project, Cable Car System, naanaputay proposal for the Cable Car, uh, System and Water Supply Improvement Project. and Water Supply Improvement Project. Unsa gigamit na criteria for identifying ni lima ka-projekts. By the way, ang Metro SUID, dili lang lima. Kaning lima nga akong i-highlight, i-highlight na tungkol kay naanay ni PREFS for possible takers, but there are hundreds of projects that are contained in the plan. So unsa gigamit na criteria? Una, high scores in the prioritization criteria like fit test prioritization. It covers, it was covered under previous planning studies, could be undertaken within three months, kung na ay budget, provides demonstrative effects for wider-scale development. Let me cite this one, the Metro CDO Railway Project. Next slide. This involves the construction of a high-speed and high-capacity passenger freight transport services linking the industrial centers of Metro Cagayan de Misamis or Metro Cagayan de Oro. A secondary but important objective is to relieve vehicle congestion along the BCS sections of the Iligan-Cagayan de Oro-Butwan Highway within Metro Cagayan de Misamis or Metro Cagayan de Oro. Under the proposed Metro Cagayan de Misamis Development, an alternate backbone around fifty-kilometer rail transport link will connect the major industrial zones in the area, like Habini Bay and then the SNT Park in Alubihid and the Fibidek Industrial Estate. The figure on screen shows the alignment of the proposed Metro CDO Railway Project. But I'll show you, I'll show later on katupong proposal ni Congressman Rufus, mismo diri sa sulod sa Cagayan de Oro. And then we have the Metro CDO Cable Car System. The Phase One Line affords passengers a sea bay view of Cagayan de Oro city skyline and mountain views. The elevation profile shows the steep gradient going to Malasag Eco Tourism Village to Mid-Rain Station and on to Mapawa Park. Phase Two include Manolo Fortiche Canyon Line running from Matibugao Station to Daling Station in a north-south orientation. Pero let me later on show you, nga naanay similar project, which is being proposed in another location in Cagayan de Oro City. And this is the Metro Cagayan de Oro Aerial Mass Transport System, nga magikan din hi sa uptown, then manau din hi sa downtown, to decongest traffic in the area. And there is already a proposal coming from the private sector. So the, next slide, so this one. So this is the Metro CDO Cable Car System Project and is envisaged to be implemented in phases with a priority Phase One, covering the four-point-to-one-kilometer cable car line from Aluana to Malasag. The concept is similar to the cable car facilities in Tagaytay, Vietnam-Langkawi in Malaysia, New Zealand. Next slide. We also have the Metro CDO Waste-to-Energy Project. The project is a response to the burgeoning solid waste situation of Metro Cagayan de Misamis LGUs. Harnessing energy from waste will provide not only a long-range and environment-friendly solution to the growing solid waste situation, but also contribute to power sources of which the demand is expected to increase in the future. Next, very important, Water Supply Improvement Project. Despite abundant water sources, the portion of the population that is served by existing water providers is limited. The fragmented system of water supply generation and distribution, which at present is LGU-based, has been subject to limited LGU resources while in areas with a dispersed population, water delivery service becomes financially not viable. Next slide. Shown is the location of the five priority infra projects for Metro CDO under the SUID MCDO. Next slide. The Lagindinan Airport Development Project is a priority project for Metro Cagayan de Misamis. Lagindinan Airport has a design capacity of one-point-six-million passengers a year and we have already breached that as early as twenty-sixteen. Medyo dugay ang incubation period. By the time nga natukod na ang airport, paspas nakaayos siya nga napuno. And the expansion is in order. The DOTR and CAAP seek a private sector proponent under an appropriate PPP arrangement to undertake the operations and maintenance of the Lagindinan Airport along construction that required additional facilities for a defined concession period. Next slide. Chapter nine of RDP twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight, the Northern Mindanao Seaboard will be prioritized to support the spatial strategies of the region and also promote the colors of Mindanao program. This strategy will link the Ka-Kamiggin, Syargao with Lagindinan Airport as access point going to Sambuanga City, the Pitang City to the west and Kamiggin-Butwan City and Surigao to the east. Next, we also have the PUB Modernization Program. It is a priority program of the transport sector. It is a large-scale transformational plan and flagship project that envisions a restructured, modern, well-managed, and environmentally sustainable transport sector. Particularly on component two, we encourage for all Metro Cagayan de Misamis LGUs to complete their local public transport route plan. Next. As part of the continuing project of development activities, ang DPWH Regional Office ten has been preparing feasibility studies for the Region Ten Priority Road Infra Project or REC PIP to support the region's road network development. Okay, so those are the two alternatives. And then, next slide. Metro Cagayan, yeah. Metro Cagayan de Oro's population is estimated to double in the next twenty years. If this happens, then there is a need to provide an estimated three-hundred-eleven-thousand-three-hundred-thirty-eight housing units by twenty-forty, or an average of about fifteen-thousand-five-hundred-sixty-six housing units annually over the next twenty years. Ang atong gusto is affordable housing and a menu of housing choices for our people. Next slide. For water supply, the goal of the sector is to provide one-hundred-percent access to water and sanitation services to Metro Cagayan de Oro by population by twenty-thirty. The following are the proposed policies, programs, and projects: Surface Water Assessment Study in Cagayan de Oro River and Tagoluan River, the Ground Water Availability Study in Metro CDO, the Water Supply Improvement Project in Libertad, the installation of rain-water harvesting facilities and buildings and structures, and support for NRW reduction projects. Next slide. The proposed sanitation projects are consistent with the strategy and policy framework that will facilitate the provision of hundred-percent sanitation services. This include the following: construction of sewage system and adoption of septic management, adapting a clustered approach where LGUs will be clustered into a single system, construction of sewage projects with priority given to environmental hotspots such as urban centers with dense populations such as the city of El Salvador in Misamis Oriental, clustered septic management projects for Lagindinan, Initaw, Alubihid, then Tagoluan, Villanueva, and Hasaan in the eastern part. The environment concerns, next slide, such as mining activities, logging, tourism, aquaculture, farming, agriculture, and climate change will be properly addressed through the following proposed programs and projects: protected area management improvement, evaluation of areas for potential inclusion as protected areas and flood management. Okay, next slide. The current status of municipal solid waste management, wherein most LGUs have no space for disposal of their residual waste and most barangays have no or little space for solid waste treatment facilities or composting, calls for a workable framework that will work for the entire Metro Cagayan de Misamis. So ipangcluster na sila, no, for their solid waste management. Next slide. So let me share the RDC ten endorsed programs and projects for Metro CDO. So Region Ten, major and catalytic projects previously identified in the RDIP. These are ten, and these have already been carried over in the next plan, some of which have already been funded. Some are being considered. Next slide. These are major and priority catalytic projects which are new. Pwede ibalik sa tungkuan, um... It's okay, sige, this one. Let me just, let me just cite, unsa ang nasa Cagayan de Oro. Bridge program under the iconic bridges. We also have the Misamis Oriental West Diversion Road. The Metro Cagayan, Metro Cagayan de Oro Light Rail and Mass Transit System. Ngang Phase One, Bugo Bulwa through BCIR Road. Phase Two is Paseo Rotonda, Makabalang, Velez, Pakana, Barangay, Puntod. And then we have the Metro Cagayan de Oro Aerial Mass Transport System. This is private sector. Gikan sa uptown, paingon din hi sa Obos, ngai-link na'to siya sa atong Bus Rapid Transit System and other intermodal system. Okay, next slide. Now, President Marcos actually announced his one-hundred-ninety-four infrastructure, infrastructure flagship projects. Gitawag o build, build more projects, one-hundred-ninety-four. Din hi sa Mindanao. Kita ang na ay kinadaghanan nga IFT. Eleven for Region Ten, ten for Region Eleven, four for Region Nine, two for Region Twelve, and BARM and one for Karaga. Di ba mupakpakta dapat kita'y kinadaghanan? Kana siya specific for Region Ten. Pero naasad sa one-hundred-ninety-four projects are twenty-four programs that are interregional in nature that will be implemented in Mindanao. Some projects, some regions will get five, some will get six. Pero taganan ninyo, pilakabook sa bainti-kwatro ang im-implement sa Region Ten? Actually, twenty-four. Why? Because kita lang ang region nga makaclaim nga naatay direct link sa Karaga Region. Tinood, Butwan, naatay direct link sa Region Nine via Misok and even Lanau del Norte. Kita lang ang region nga makaclaim nga naatay direct link sa BARM through Iligan and even through Bukidnon, Katabato. Kita lang pod ang region nga na ay direct link going to Soksargen and to Eleven. That's why we are ideal as a logistics hub and really gateway to Region, to Mindanao. Pero kani siyang IFTs, they are in various, as, various levels pa, na ay ongoing. O sa maning mga ongoing? Kaning Frim CDR, nga ato ng na-launch, ato ng na-inaugurate ang Package Two, kulang na'to Package One and Three. Ongoing ang Coastal Road Project, no? Ongoing ang Panggil Bay Bridge. Ongoing ang Bukidnon Development Airport. Pero project preparation stage, isa kadakong na project nga ana, mauang, unsa man kaha? Number nine, the Cagayan de Oro Bus Rapid Transit. Pre-project preparation. Ang uban ani ongoing project preparation nga na ay kalabutan sa ato din hi sa Metro CDO muoning Metro, Mindanao Railway Project Phase Three, then Naawan Opol-Cagayan de Oro City. Ang atong, ang atong effort din hi gil sa Region Ten will be to see to it that before this president steps down, all this project will move in the pipeline. Katung ongoing mahuman. Katung pre, katung naapay project preparation, maaprubahan for funding. Katung titulop alang, mahuman ang iang FS or detailed engineering, mapunduhan, and then maimplementad. Bahala o dili pa mahuman sa end of twenty-twenty-eight. Tungkol kay taas man ang proseso. Pag shepherd sa usaka project, gikan sa titulohan, tud nga siya mahuman. Next slide. Sige lang ba tanong, pamantang tanan? Gitan pa na'to na siya, no? Okay, so, next slide. So this one. On the side of the DPWH, they have identified eight high-impact projects, four of which are located within the Metro CDO area. These are the Cagayan de Oro Coastal Road, the Masterson Avenue Alternate Diversion Road, the Cagayan de Oro New Western Diversion Road, the Cagayan de Oro Opol-El Salvador-Alubihid-Lagindinan Airport, Mountain Diversion Road, and the Iligan City Coastal Road. Kani mo traverse gudnitsya sa sulod sa atong Metro CDO. Next slide. Now, we have an ad hoc committee for Metro Cagayan de Misamis. This is the governance mechanism for the Metro CDO. Morashak platform para ang mga local chief executives sa mga LGUs nga appeal sa Metro Cagayan de Oro, magkahistorihanay. As I've said, the first chair was Mayor Oscar Moreno and we have had two meetings with him. Pero, we're organizing it and we are trying to encourage the mayor of Cagayan de Oro to take up the leadership of this ad hoc committee. Why? Because Cagayan de Oro is the anchor LGU for Metro CDO. Next slide. Muonay organizational structure. Natay RDC Full Council, natay Executive Committee, ang Secretariat mauang NEDA. Isa sa special committees, muoning ad hoc committee for Metro Cagayan de Misamis. Ngadong adhok ramansha, because it will cease to exist once ma-create na ang Metro Cagayan de Oro or Metro Cagayan de Misamis Development Authority. Ang ato lang is that there is going to be a sustained conversation about the preparation for the metropolitanization of Cagayan de Oro. Pero bisan pag wala ni siya naorganize, ah, wala pa siya na-reorganize. Naorganize na ni siya. Wala pa na-reorganize, ang plano is karong fourteen, June fourteen. Kapadayon ang hisgutanan, kabahin sa Metro CDO and the RDC. Because in fact, for the past three budgeting processes, we have included as a criteria for the review of the budget proposals of our agencies, their budgets for the metropolitanization of Cagayan de Oro. Next slide. So who are the members of the ad hoc committee? So we have the governors of Misamis Oriental and Bukidnon, the mayors of the thirteen cities and municipalities, USTP, the regional governor of the Philippine Chamber of Commerce of Region Ten, Oro Chamber President, NEDA ten director, and four other candidate LGUs, and the secretariat is the NEDA. That's intirin. Next slide. So let me talk about House Bill Number One Eight Forty. Gamay na lang yun, hapit ang yun kumahuman. One Eight Forty and Act Creating the Metro Cagayan de Misamis Development Authority, defining its powers, functions, and providing funding therefore and for other purposes. Next slide. So this was refiled by Congressman Rufus in response to the request of Rep. Edwin L. Olivares, Chairperson of the committee. The NEDA Central Office provided comments and recommendations on said bill on March twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three. It reiterated that the bill considered the metro coverage and governance mechanism proposed in the SUID MCDO. And as of date, said House Bill is still pending with a committee. Next slide. Oh, now, last two slides talong yun ko. Thank you very much. These are my last two slides. Ways forward for the region. Sustained mainstreaming of Metro CDO concerns in regional development processes. Nasulod na na'to siya sa RDP. Disulod na'to siya sa RDIP. We will see to it that this will be included in the agency budgets and this will be monitored appropriately. We need to rally for the immediate funding and implementation of Metro CDO programs and projects, especially our infra-flagship and catalytic projects, which I have presented to you. Deliberate on Metro CDO concerns and recommendations during the meetings of the Ad hoc Committee for Metro CDO and RDC ten Full Council and seek support for the enactment of House Bill One Eight Forty. Now ma'am, sir, munya ko pangalupo. Ways forward for the anchor city which is Cagayan de Oro. Una is to really update the CLUP to integrate Metro CDO. And I understand the CLUP is currently being updated. And we hope that they will consider the metropolitanization of Cagayan de Oro and include in the CLUP our infrastructure flagship projects and other catalytic projects. Secondly, we would like to pangalupo once again that the updated CLUP of CDO will be one of the bases for the comprehensive development plan of the city. Another is to fund and implement programs and projects that support sustainable and efficient metropolitanization and another is to support House Bill One Eight Forty and other legislation for metropolitanization. And that ends my presentation. O mayhapon ka na'to tanan.
Thank you very much. Very good report. Yes, any comment? Yes, uh, co, uh, Majority Floor Leader, would you like to do the floor? Okay, sige. Uh, yes, Counselor, who was raising his hands first? Counselor, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, then Counselor Attorney James Judith. Yes, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you for the not-so-brief but very comprehensive report of our Regional Director of NEDA, Director.
I did not promise pre. I did not promise pre.
Yeah. But I like it to be lengthy so that we can understand clearly the direction and the goal of the national government, including that of the National Economic Development Authority. And we're very happy that the, there are, the proposed and the drafted pre-feasibility studies were already done. And they are now in the offing for consideration of all the agencies concerned, especially in the national government. While the local government unit, units involved in this metropolization as challenged and forced by, posed by Director Myla that we should incorporate all these programs and projects that are supposed to be the steps forward, uh, the metropolization of Kagayan di Oro City. So, uh, one, we have participated in a brief initial discussion at the city's level when the City Planning Office have hired, the city mayor himself have hired 2 consultants to prepare for the updating of the, uh, CLUP. And during which discussions were, were, were given by these consultants and by the Office of the CPDO. And maybe perhaps NEDA can guide and provide inputs to these consultants of the city of Kagayan di Oro and even, uh, gear up some, 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 uh, technical support. We understand that NEDA has so much resources and in terms of their personnel. Moning usa sa akong gisaludohan. Daka, gal, glingi, glingi na si Director kay, ipangrecruit na nga, may mo City Planning Officer, may mo na Provincial Planning Officer, ang ilang mga personnel. Kay tungod kay nadina ang mga experts. But be as it may, we urge that we should be guided. And if there is the need that we pass a resolution to this effect, maybe perhaps we also consider. And as mentioned, gearing forward, we, uh, perhaps pass resolutions to support the, the proposal of Congressman Rufus before the Congress to enact the, the House, uh, House Bill. And maybe perhaps we also ask through a resolution the President of the Republic of the Philippines to make priority the 5th metropolitan in the country, which is already, uh...
Fourth.
The fourth. That's a good correction. Kayan Sibu wala pa. Anyway. That's why, that's why. Pero the claim that the private sector sa Sibu, uh, they have already done the fundamentals even without the government interventions. And gover, yeah, I, I was one of the meetings in the, sponsored by USAID when we were in Sibu. That was 10 years ago perhaps, Madam Presiding Officer. There, there, the, the private sector is really, uh, on, hand on the direction of the, uh, the, the city's metropolitan. Anyway, uh, so, maybe at the proper time, we, we all consider. Klaro kayo sa ato, ang, ang kuwan. Imagine, na na'y mga feasibility studies, na na'y mga, uh, special considerations of all the entire areas, but there's a bit of conflict between the proposal in Congress and the proposed, and that proposed by RDC sa municipalities. Wada na appeal ang, ang, ang Bukidnon, um, uh, Manolo Fortiz and Hitagom. Libertad during the forum sponsored by NEDA during the stint of Director June. Iligan City may appeal, he participated to nga, nga meeting. Even Governor Bambi mano attended then, the, the, the meeting. So dagan kay interesado ani. Uh, ako, pabor ko which way for as long as Kagayan di Oro is the center of all. And maybe at the proper time, we, we pass all these resolutions as requested by NEDA. And maybe we introduce additional to address the, the concern to the President of the, uh, of the Republic. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, this time really very brief comment on the manifestation. Thank you, Counselor Nakaya, for your manifestation of support. Uh, in NEDA ma'am, we're, we're only 50. And as it is, uh, we are all overworked and actually multitasking. And we're also a member of several committees din ni sa Kagayan di Oro. And gaappeal gudpod mi ma'am, no? Even kang Counselor Cabanlas, resource person ni sa katung, um, Reclamation Project. Kuwan lang sir, on a case-to-case basis, we will assist Kagayan di Oro. But last week, we have actually approved the request of Kagayan di Oro nga dito sila mag-meeting sa among office for the finalization of their CLUP. Ma'am, bisag gamay rami ma'am, dako kayo ang among pasyon. So we will participate, Counselor, pero kanang sa makayag yun na mo uno. But you can be assured nga we will always give our best. Now, some of the projects, ako lang klaruhon, some of projects are already funded. Some are already ongoing. Kaya lang, when we discuss manggo'd about Region 10 catalytic projects, wala namang gutay compartmentalization nga Metro CDO ni, development ni, because actually, many of our projects, many of the programs and projects that are funded, they are hitting several stones at the same time. They promote, they promote inclusive development, and they also support the metropolitanization of Kagayan di Oro. Be that as it may, I'd like to assure you nga dagantag programs and projects, and we are shepherding it para maniguro gitna that these are funded and implemented, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Director Myla. Yes, Counselor Attorney James Judith, you are recognized?
Yes, bye. Sa atong halangdung bisimayor, Jocelyn Bebo Rodriguez, akong tinahot ng mga kauban sa konseho, atong mga bisita gikan sa Lano del Sur, og mga membro sa prensa sa inyong tanan, maupay. Inanila akong bakotan na kang Director Myla. Inani, una Director Myla, nakita na ko nga nakaappeal dito sa imong slide presentation na dito nga appeal sa governance mechanism ang lungsod sa Manolo Fortiz. Pero sa akong nasairan, ibasa na ko ang HB 1843 ni Congressman Rufus Rodriguez. Natigala ko kay wala na naappeal ang mga pipila kamangan lungsod sa Bukidnon. So, un sa inungdan kay sa akong pagdungog, naaman to sila nga ngano na may pag-usap. Niya, labin na nga disuportahan bagid sa pangalan sa katung House Bill ni Congressman Rufus 1843 nga Kagayan di Misamis na siya.
Yes.
Subot pa sa buti, labin na'to iappeal ang katung mga pipila kamangan lungsod sa Bukidnon.
Actually, we had a meeting with Congressman Rodriguez because the first version of his bill, we actually commented. So when the Metro SUID, the Metros, uh, the Metropolitan Kagayan di Oro Sustainable Urban Infra-Development Master Plan was completed, naay gi-proposed nga governance mechanism which was actually approved by NEDA. nga ang anchor city ma o ang Kagayan di Oro. And then we also include a Manolo Fortiz because kontiguos man siya duulgy siya sa Kagayan di Oro. And we also included Hitagom and Libertad because of its proximity to Lagindinan. And then naapoy water sources. So actually, amunan ning gi-present kang Kong, and we actually drafted, no, uh, our version. Uh, but si Kong, when he filed, wala to niya gi-appeal, pero ang iyang ingon, Counselor, is that it would be in the second phase. Ang iyang, ang iyang gusto lang sa is, anchor sa Metro Kagayan di Oro. Pero kami sa NEDA, ang among advocacy yun, remakes the same.
Including...
Really, including Bukidnon, Hitagom, Libertad. And in fact, when NEDA Central Office was requested for its comment sa House Bill 1843, ang iyang comment, ang comment yun sa NEDA Central Office is one, to consider the programs and projects that are contained in the Sustainable Urban Infra-Development Master Plan. And at the same time, there was also a request for the bill to consider the other areas.
Okay. Niya, ikaduwan din, Madam Chair, ikaduwa din Director May, is ang, ang nasulti na bungat mantunin mo ganina sa slide presentation sa kung maaprobahining sa ato mahimo tang ikaupat. Pero sa akong nakita, ang Metro Sibu, Metro Davau nga model, dili pa maging kasiya effective, kaya pa maging na siya napatuman. So ang atong kabasean is ang Metro Manila nga model.
In terms of leg, uh, in terms of legal basis, Counselor, ang approved yun is ang NCR and then ang Davau.
Yes, ang Metro Manila.
Ang kulang na lang sa Davau is really operationalization, kaya nagulat na lang man sila sa IRR. Ang Sibu yun, ang pag-operationalize nila sa Metro Sibu is actually through MOA. Pero ang mga programs and projects niya sa ilang MOA, 13 man sila noka, uh, LGUs, 5 lang pod ana ang nagcontribute. Pero katung sila tanan purus nakapirma sa MOA, pero murag wala pa naratify sa ilang mga, ilang mga legislative bodies, no? But in the meantime, um, nagpadayon mangihapon sila ang Metro Sibu Development Board.
And Metro Davau.
Pero since 2011, wala pa yun naaprobahan tong bill sa Metro Sibu. Pero ang Metro Davau naaprobahan na ilang bill.
Pero Director May, subot pa sa buti, baga ang ato, bali nga model, murag ang Metro Sibu or Metro Davau. Kay sa akong pagtanaw sa...
Actually, combination siya.
HB 1843, wala may pag-usap sa dynamic, sa relasyon, sa katung mga lungsod sa Misamis Oriental. Kay kun tanawin mo, sa Metro Manila nga model, Director May, ang kani mga, na'y mga dakba yan sa Metro Manila, nausap, natangtang na sila sa ilang mother unit ang, ang nalawigan sama sa Balenzuela, sama sa Makati, duwera mo sila nakatanggal, labin apod sa kaloukan, ipangtanggal sila sa ilang mother unit. So, pero sa akong pagsubot, tong, eh, ak, na, na, kana kung, ma, sa sakto ba ko, Director May, pwede ko nimo correction na na ni.
Myla, actually, si, ni kay, si Director Nchuwanto.
Ah, yes, Director Myla na.
Myla.
Sa akong pagsubot, Director Myla, is kining, ang teri mga lungsod sa Misamis Oriental, dili man siya mawala sa iyang...
No, sir, dili, sir.
Sa Misamis Oriental. So practically, ang ato yung pag-operate sa Metro Kagayan di Misamis, so bi, murag ato lang gi-upgrade ang katung inyo na mga naprobahan sa RDC, di ba?
We already endorse it, actually, kani Metro, kani, as inga, ingon pa nato is sa dili na'to i-diminish, no, ang authority gehapon sa LGU. Niya, dili gehapon na'to sila tang tangon sa ilang mga respective nga mga, mga probinsya. Pero kani manggo'd siya nga mga, mga municipyo nga naglibot actually sa Kagayan di Oro or katung mga kasikbit nga lugar nga nakakita na ugka ng growth. Makita manggo'd nato nga, gatanaw na'to no, ilang patterns of growth in terms of population, no, and population not only in terms of fertility but also because of migration. And we're also looking at kani urbanization ani nga mga areas. So gi-anticipate na nato no, sa ang mga problema of a metropolitan area. One, really transportation, no? Congestion, isa sa ato nakita kanang mga housing, ang mga needs, sewage, um, septic, water. So kana, ang atong hisgutan is really, kani mga common issues sa metropolitan area. Pero ang development sa ilang respective nga LGUs magpadayon gehapon. We'll just talk about common issues like transportation, like, um, electricity, like, uh, housing, water, energy.
Last na lang dayon, Director May.
Last, okay.
Okay, last. Ang ako lang is, um, kung wala sa labot ang mga pipila kamangan lungsod sa Bukidnon, so practically, Kagayan lang yun taong mga pipila kamangan lungsod or bahin sa Misamis Oriental. So practically, murag ato lang gi-upgrade or gi-enhance katung basic nga framework gihimon na sa unang panahon sa Kagayan di Oro Iligan Corridor Special Development Project. Kay nakaappeal maquato Director May. Kanang, at igoran gi-adapt bali kung butsumahon sa RDC karoon og sa Metro Kagayan di Misamis katung ipang-approve na og mga gi-stadihan na sa Louis Berger International?
Actually, sir, kita no, uh, dili tanag claim nga original yung idea. As I've mentioned, the idea of metropolitanization started as early as 1990.
Yes.
So gay tanaw na'to na siya nga mga references. But ang gi-endorse yun nga version sa RDC, katung gi-approve sa NEDA through the SUID MCDO. And the version that was really endorsed is appeal yun ang Manolo Fortiz. There's really no stopping the development of Manolo Fortiz. And paingon na yun na din ha, no? And the gateway to siya sa Bukidnon, pero tungod sa iyang kadul, proximity sa Kagayan di Oro, no, makadawat na sa na siya sa development sa CDO. So actually, ang ato yung gi-appeal katung 13 nga akong, katung akong ipakita ganina. Gi-appeal yun sa original na'to ang Manolo Fortiz, naa ang Libertad, naa ang Hitagom. Pero sa version ni Congressman Rufus, wala pa niya naappeal. Pero gita wag niya nga second phase. Pero ang gi-endorse sa RDC katung yung gi-approve sa SUID MCDO.
Labin na kay ang, ang Manolo Fortiz mahimo na pong dakba yan, puhon.
Puhon, okay.
Tagayo salamat.
Thank you very much. Any more comment? Yes, Counselor Bernice Parsha?
Dayon salamat, Madam Chair. May hapon ka na tanan sa mga nagtanaw sa live, sa atong, uh, mga bisita, maayong hapon. Madam Chair, just allow me 2 points lang akong gusto. Uh, first, just a manifestation, uh, as a new legislator and a young legislator, nakita na tong mga plans, murag guapo, yu kayo, Madam Chair, ang metropolization. Just 2 lang, kun tama ba kung pag, ano, ang ad hoc committee was headed by the former mayor? Tama ba ma'am?
Ang kani ad hoc committee, ang pag-head na is through election.
Okay.
So by virtue of an election that happened in 2021, uh, the former mayor was elected as chair. Pero ang iyang term, moen sad kay ang terms sa atong RDC officials would coincide with the term of the local officials. So technically, nag-end na put ang term ni Mayor Moreno atong June 30. Wap, anto siya nagbinagan, pero mukin na siya end.
So that's why, Madam Chair, I would like to ask kay din, subagko naman ang mayor. Karoon ba suboy pag gehapon ang ad hoc, automatic ang atong mayor?
Actually, for the longest time, we have been trying to already organize it. And our, another attempt is this coming June 14.
Ah, so muna, supostobeh...
June 13 na put, basta mariorganize yun siya.
Okay, supostobeh muna akong question kung so far ba, nag, nagtapok na bang ad hoc meeting abaguna si Mayor Clarix na karumpang...
June. Muna ang maduol ni Mayor Pakumandiri.
Ah, madungga na niya ma'am.
Maduol me dito.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Then, number 2, Madam Chair, I, nagnots ko ganina, then may nakabotang on dividing on the cluster strategy. Just, just want to ask ma'am, please enlighten lang me. On, on the process of clustering ma'am, unsan na nakabase? Based on sa location, population, or income?
Contiguity, and also a commonality of resources or commonality of needs.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, any more question? Yes, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, you are recognized?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is just, uh, an opinion on what the report of our Regional Director. Whether we like it or not, the city of Kagayan di Oro is the center of commerce and, and all this development came out. And we have all this development even without the metropolization of Kagayan di Oro. Now remember that, that Metro Manila was not created. The law creating the Metropolitan Manila, Metro Manila, was created under that must fear. Ang una, ang balawag na naghihimo niya na is a presidential district. And we should remember that. Why? Because to organize several LGUs into one, it takes time, it takes patience, it takes study, it takes adjustment, everything. That is why Sibu was not able to pass that law. Why in the bow? Because the sitting president at the time is President Duterte. And he is the grandfather there in the bow. Di'ta mataranta, ay, relax. Why? Because all this development, nagsukod pa ni provincial member because Misamis Oriental, when the study for Metro Kagayan di Oro started, kani Lagindinan, gingun na ni, kuwan, Lagindinan Airport, kani highway, butuan, Iligan, that was the product of that PBD, that was the product of that, sa tunggalan na tunga, study. Katung atong, kani atong, kani atong, uh, drainage systems Kagayan di Oro. It was part of that whole study. Even without that study, we can continue to grow because the growth of the city does not come from the government, it comes from the private sector. That is the basic lobby economy. Now, I will move that the report of our Regional Director shall refer to the Committee on Planning. Because we have not studied and we have not read the law, that, the bill that was proposed by Congressman Rufus Rodriguez. So we cannot pass any resolution supporting that. We need to know what is inside. And second, there should be a consultation among the member LGUs. We should listen to them. We should listen to the mayor of, uh, the mayors from Lagindinan, uh, from Lagindinan to, to, to saan, Manolo Fortiz and everybody. So primero, let us na'to about the law. Let us talk about friendship and talking points katung, uh, to hisgutang gikan kanila. We have to listen to them. Kaya usap ka na sa butang, pasartek balaw, di na to, konsultahon ng mga mayor, kaniwatong mga LGUs and the different uh city councils and the municipal councils, nagugbut kitanya na. So I move that is refer to the, to the report to the planning. We are with you, Director. Pupuyi lang, mapaspasan nato ni, yes we can. But as I said, this is a critical and very important issue. Kanang metropolitanization of Kagan Yoro into a law. Ina lang yun nato na istugyan pagayo. After all, nagpadayon me gehapon atong pantalan. Naanamas pipeline ang atong uh bus rap- uh bus rapid transit. Naanamas sa pipeline ang atong uh railway. Naanamas ang mga kadalanan. Ngagipaning gamutan ni Policeman Rofos. Everything is there. Kining ang balaw, we have to study. We have to study because we have to listen. We have to have consultation. Sumatulang yung refer sa, sa city planning, sa atong planning committee and to make recommendation. And perhaps the planning committee can make consultation with other LGUs. Para nga, ato siya silang marispetuhan.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Edgar Cabalas. So refer to the committee on planning and development to uh Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Manifestation, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much, uh Councilor. As I've said, the genesis of the metropolitanization has really been long. And we never forget unsa iyang gigikanan and we always refer so that mo update ka nunay sa atong plano. Ang Suid, uh, ang Suid MCDO that was approved by the RDC underwent good consultation in all the municipalities. Pero kanasayod ni ang atong 2022 election na naghanausap, sumabalik napod mi no ugga. Kaya nga, that's a reality, reality manan siya and that's part of a healthy process of democracy. Sumunang mubalik napod mi, mukonsulta kabahin sa ila. But uh Councilor Cabalas is correct ma'am. Muna ang abisan pa bitaw, wala pa na create ang Metropolitan uh Kagan Yoro Development Authority. Nagpadayon tapag implementar sa mga programs and projects.
Correct.
Because the benefit is beyond Metro CDO. The benefit would actually radiate across Region 10 and even sa mga kasikbit ni aning mga region. So ang ato ani is that even if dilip pa lugar mapasar, ang atong Metropolitan uh Kagan Yoro Development Authority or Metro Kagan Yoro Misamis Development Authority magpadayon ang atong pakigbiso. We will continue implementing the programs and projects and we will continue uh having this conversation. Muna, gusto na yun na muriorganize ang Adho Committee.
So it's going to be as soon as possible, June, right?
Yes ma'am.
So that uh it's early, still had another if two years more?
Yes ma'am, before election, yes ma'am.
And I would like to ask also Director Myla.
Yes ma'am.
Uh can we be very specific on this disaster mitigating development? We have the problem already of water, uh traffic, how about disaster mitigation development?
Excellent question ma'am, excellent question. So actually ma'am, kami atong comprehensive land use plan, na nanisay climate change lens. And even ang atong regional development plan, ang atong regional physical framework plan, na naggyud take climate change because lens, climate change adaptation, tungod kadi dilim naggyud nato, dilim kita mo ingon nga, it will happen in the future, it's already happening now, no? Muna, very important na in the design of our programs and projects, nakaintegrate ang resiliency against disasters. So muna ma'am, nausap napod ang atong panglantao noon when we assess or evaluate program project proposal. Because gitanaw po nato ma'am, how this program and project can actually promote or enhance or improve the resilience of individuals and communities? Muna, nagpasalamaton me sa Kagan Yoro sa ilang uh pass pass nga action, Councilor Cabalas na open naggyud nato ang package 2. And then hopefully mahuman na nato ang package 3 and what, sa kining flood risk uh management projects and other projects.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more comment? No more? I would like to thank Director Myla for a very good report, bisag ako nakasabot ko, no? In a way, so we do not attend to your meetings, but then somehow with the explanation, we're able to understand and uh what's going to happen and soon to happen and what's happening now. So thank you very much Director Myla.
Madam Chair, can we have a picture?
Of course. Uh we would like to request uh recess, one minute recess. Uh let's have a picture with the director, Director Myla Carino. Alsahan na siya, Ed, Madam Silo Edgar Cabalas. Director? Din? Ahaman, taas siya. Uy, pabanas ako, ako raw sa dere. Kasi may mukuyon na ako dere. G- Councilor Gurli. Dita kaya ko ba, ako raw sa dere. Councilor, uh Suset.
Hello ma'am.
Hello. Kami inyung konstituente sa kanyang street. Mura, di ko nakadungdun. Di galik ko ke banon sa mga plano, okay? Ale, oh, ang usad dere para balanse. Okay? Smile?
Oh, salamat kay ma'am for inviting us.
Please salamat, yugayo, kanasatong cable car. Kanasatong cable car?
Cable car ma'am.
Mura, dali forward ko ng cable car.
Kaya sa uptown ma'am, naano is a flyer from uh, from Austria?
Ah, di po.
Yeah, yun nagitan, oo, nag- test na sila for uptown dinin, dinaug dinin sa sudad. So mura maulahitong ato dito sa mapawat, mauna dinikit traffic.
Ah, ato gani, ang-
Uptown ma'am.
Alwan na?
Dilim ba sa kining ibabaw car, nasa kanyang, nung year ato, uptown na, upper uptown.
May uuntay, muna na ako sa kyan. Thank you again, thank you very much, okay. Okay. Uh session resume. Please go back to your seats.
Councilor James Judith.
Madam Chair, gi-referman ni Councilor Cabalas katong ganina, ang katong report ni Director Myla, pwede nalampot, i-appel nalampot ang komitiba sa kining pangaluhan ni Councilor Bernice Parsha sa katong uh disaster resilience and climate change. Kaya appeal naman na, usa namang gudla siya sa kalambuhan sa atong dakba yan.
Sa committee on uh climate change, no? Councilor uh Bernice Parsha. Okay, let us proceed. Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Edgar Cabalas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, okay, so we proceed to the business of the day. I move to lift the order of suspension.
Suspension?
Lifted.
Lifted. Please proceed.
Turks, uh propose resolution number one, number one. Omnibus, oh?
Uh for omnibus approval, items 1, 2, 3, and 4. Item 1 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 403, supporting House Bill number 6671 entitled, "An Act Converting the Kagan Yoro Bugu School of Arts and Trades in the City of Kagan Yoro, Province and Misamis Oriental Into a Polytechnic Institution" to be, into a polytechnic institution to be administered and supervised by the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority to be known as the Kagan Yoro Polytechnic Institute and appropriating funds therefore filed by Honorable Rofos B. Rodriguez, Second District Congressional Representative of Kagan Yoro City. Item number 2 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 404, supporting House Bill number 973 entitled, "An Act Establishing a College of Medicine in the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, Kagan Yoro City Campus in Kagan Yoro City, Province of Misamis Oriental to be known as the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, College of Medicine and Appropriating Funds Therefore, filed by Honorable Rofos B. Rodriguez, Second District Congressional Representative of Kagan Yoro City." Number 3 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 405, supporting House Bill number, number 7400 entitled, "An Act Institutionalizing an Enterprise-Based Education and Training Program to Strengthen Technical Vocational Education and Training and Appropriating Funds Therefore, filed by Honorable Rofos B. Rodriguez, Second District Congressional Representative of Kagan Yoro City." Number 4 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 406, supporting House Bill number 1456 entitled, "An Act Changing the Name of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines into the University of Science and Technology of the Philippines, amending for the purpose Republic Act number 10919, filed by Honorable Rofos B. Rodriguez, Second District Congressional Representative of Kagan Yoro City." The four resolutions are authored by the Honorable City Vice Mayor Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, Committee Sponsors, Committee on Education, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Madam Chair, may I request Councilor Suset Magtaas Daba, to be recognized?
Councilor Suset Daba, you recognize?
Tagan salamat, Madam Chair, may hapon sa tanan. Uh Madam Chair, uh first of all, I refer this to the respective offices. And uh among the four proposed resolutions, Madam Chair, um there was no objection, but I would like to emphasize that the reply of uh uh the reply of COBSTAT, they have a letter uh on page 45. Um I would just like to emphasize, Madam Chair, that they have added some points to the resolution.
Okay.
So uh I move to approve proposed uh resolution number 2023 dash 403, 2023 dash 404, 2023 dash 405, and 2023 dash 406.
And a second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
Move to approve on second and final reading, Madam Chair.
And a second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
Number 5, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 407, Turks?
Item number 5 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 407, accrediting the RBMC 29, Reform Batang Mindanao in Christ 29, CDO and Suburban Incorporated for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies pursuant to DILG circular number 2022 dash 083 and Article 64 Rule 13 of the Rules and Regulations Implementing the 1991 Local Government Code. Or funding a project from the city or other sources are required under the COA Circular Pertinent 32, Committee Sponsors, Committee on Planning, Research and Innovation, and People's Organization Accreditation, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Can we, Madam Chair, can we request that uh Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya be recognized?
Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, you recognize?
Move for its approval.
And a second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
Uh move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
Omnibus motions, Madam Chair, item 6, 7, and 8, Turks?
For item 6 is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 230. For those with digital agenda, it's marked as resolution number 2023 dash 408. There's a correction, it's now proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 230. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Uyui, representing the city government of Kagan Yoro, to enter into and sign the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with the CRU Northern Mindanao, CRU Norman, represented by its SLM team leader Albert Adimos, covering the collaboration of the parties for the online or face-to-face seminars on mentoring, coaching, and spiritual development of the city scholars under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item 7 is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 231, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Uyui, representing the city government of Kagan Yoro, to enter into and sign the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with the A National Resilience Council, NRC, represented by its Executive Director, Mr. Silvestri Z. Baramida Jr., B. Carlos Per-Pi Romulo Foundation for Peace and Development Incorporated, represented by its member of the Board of Trustees, Ricardo J. Romulo, SM Prime Holdings Incorporated, SM, represented by its Chairman of the Executive Committee, Mr. Hans TC, and D. Siber University Ateneo de Kagan, XU, represented its President, Father Mars Piton HG, covering the renewal of the Adapt a City Initiative under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item, item 8 is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 232, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Uyui, representing the city government of Kagan Yoro, to enter into and sign the Memorandum of Agreement, MOA, with the Home Development Mutual Fund, Pagibig Fund, represented by its Vice President, Members Services Branch Operation, Visman Group, Rio R TVS, covering the implementation of the online or virtual pagibig for short-term loan, STL, applications of member employees of the city government under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Committee Sponsors, Committee on Education, Committee on Climate Change Adaptation Mitigation and Disaster Risk Reduction, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Madam Chair, for item 6, uh may I request that Councilor Suset Magtaas Daba be recognized?
Councilor Suset Daba, you recognize?
Tagan salamat, Madam Chair, move to approve this resolution.
And a second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Objection? One information, you recognize, Councilor Attorney James Judith?
Just for Director, libog na ko kay, ang last nato, number 5, di ba si Riati man tabo, Turks, magnambiring. Uh number 5 was proposed resolution number 2023 dash 407. Ni ambak na takaran 2023 dash 230 nagdegress ta. Ah, so sa resolution, ah, okay, okay. So sa sa ordinance, muna yun siya, so nagskip ta kay para sa ordinance, dilim siya ingon nga, parayong number 8.
Nambiring sa ordinance lain lang.
Lahi ang sa ordinance, lahi ang sa resolution.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And a second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
For item 7, uh may I request, Madam Chair, that Councilor Malvern is Parsha be recognized?
Councilor Malvern is Parsha, you recognize?
Si Ben?
You're not listening? Listen, eyes on the board?
Di sobran ka-focus ba na? Move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 230.
And a second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
On item 8, uh I move to approve uh proposed ordinance number uh 2023, uh 2033.
Twenty-
232.
232? And a second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
So move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage.
Item, item number 9, Turks?
Item number 9 is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 233, appropriating the sum of 21,677 pesos and 32 centavos from the salary savings of the item number 36, administrative assistant for under the personal services of the city accounting department for the period January 1 to 192023 in the 2023 annual budget to be made available for the payment of the unpaid claim for salary for the period December 1 to 31 2022 of Mr. Geno C. Bumbeyo, Administrative Aid 6 Clerk 3, who was appointed as regular permanent plantilla personnel of the city accounting department effective December 1 2022, Committee Sponsors, Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
May I request, Madam Chair, that Councilor Joeline Mercedes Balaba be recognized?
Councilor Joeline Mercedes Balaba, you recognize?
Yes, uh good afternoon. Uh I move for the proposed uh, for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 233.
And a second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carriage. I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Item ten, Turks.
Item number ten, ten is proposed ordinance number 2823 dash 234. Authorizing the City Accountant to charge the sum of 18,594 pesos from the item None Office Social Services Sector, LDRRMF 2023, Disaster Prevention and Mitigation, under the Hapsai Sapa Program, Declaguing the Sealing of Existing Major Water Risks and Its Tributaries, MOUE, Other General Services in the 23, 2023 annual budget to cover payment of the unpaid claim for salary for actual services rendered for the month of December 2022 by Ms. Camille May Suarez, Administrative Assistant Five on Job Order Status. Committee Sponsors, Committee on Finance and Budget and Appropriations, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Madam Chair, may I request Councilor Romeo V. Caliso be recognized?
Councilor Romeo Caliso, you're recognized?
May I move for the approval of this set ordinance, Madam Chair?
Any second?
Second?
Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second and final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Uh, number eleven, Turks.
Item number eleven is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 235. Approving the application of Mr. Rodrigo G. Go, President, Lumbia Octagon Sports Arena, Loza, Barangay Lumbia, the city, for a permit to conduct an invitational derby at the said arena on June 14, 2023. Committee Sponsors, Committee on Games and Amusement, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Madam Chair, may I request that Councilor Roger Z. Abadai?
Councilor Roger Abadai, you're recognized?
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair and my colleagues. I move to approve, uh, proposed ordinance number 2325. Since such application is in compliance under PD 449, Section 5, Paragraph D, and City Ordinance 4373, particularly Section 76 to 78, and with the recommendation of the City Legal Office.
Any second? Objection? Objection?
None.
Are you sure? Okay. Asan na tu, nakaliwala, ninong ko. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second? Objection? Objection? None. Motion is hereby carried.
Number twelve, Turks.
Item number twelve is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 236. Approving the application of Mr. Isagani P. Ligaspi, President, Canituan Farmers Scale Entrepreneurial Association, Barangay Canituan, the city, for a permit to conduct a three-cock derby at the Canituan Pagatpat Cockpit Arena on June 15, 2023. Committee Sponsors, Committee on Games and Amusement, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Same person?
Same person, ah, yes.
Councilor Roger Abadai, you're recognized?
I move to approve this, uh, ordinance.
Read completion entire?
Considering that it complies with the requirements under PD 449, Section 5, Paragraph D, City Ordinance 4373 dash 94, particularly Section 736 to 738, and with the recommendation of the City Legal Office.
Intoto. Any second? Objection? Another objection? None, motion is hereby carried.
Subject to biaga. Uh, move to approve on second and final reading.
Second? Objection? Ilumba kayo? Motion is hereby carried.
Madam Chair, uh, may I move to include item, una pa, items thirteen and fourteen in our agenda.
Okay, any second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Item, uh, thirteen, Turks.
Item number thirteen is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 408. Suspending the next regular session on June 13, 2023 in deference to Independence Day and City Charter Day celebrations. And in lieu thereof, calling for a special session on June 15, 2023 at 1:30 PM to be held at the Kagan di Oro City International Convention Center, Barangay Indahag, for purposes of hearing the State of the City Address, Soka of His Honor City Mayor Rolando Aui. Proponents, all members.
All members are movements of this motion, Madam Chair.
Any second? Objection? None. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Item fourteen, Turks.
Um, item fourteen is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 409. Designating Honorable J.R. Pasqual, City Councilor, Kagan di Oro, City Philippines, as Ambassador of Goodwill to Taiwan on the occasion of his travel there too on June 16 to 19 2023. Authorizing him on official time to observe modern trends of legislative bodies thereof akin to the City Council of Kagan di Oro, particularly on tourism projects and programs of local government units thereof, and highly appreciating whatever assistance and courtesy extended to him with respect to and in furtherance of his trip or mission under this resolution. Proponents, all members.
Move by all members present, Madam Chair.
Any second, manifestation? Oh, manifestation, okay, Councilor Attorney James Judith?
We will approve it, Madam Chair, provided that, uh, Councilor J. Pasqual will bring Pasalubok or travel.
Any objection? No objection? Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second? Objection? When are you coming back? Who's with you?
Secret.
Secret. Dali ken na katupag ang majority, secret. Anyway, uh, any second?
Second?
Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried. Happy trip, huh?
There being no other matters to take up, move to adjourn.
Session adjourn, God bless us all. Where's the birthday cake?